News Post and emails sent to the list of firms provided by MDE. Staff met on December 17th, 2018 for the initial bid opening and staff were assigned bids to review. We received 10 total bids. January 15th, 2019, staff reviewed all bids in depth and the determination of the final five. Of those final five, I narrowed it down to three firms, and then you'll see my recommendation. Over on page 19, we narrowed it down to Zest LLC. Their bid amount was $15,912. JMT, $19,936. And CPJ, $23,690. A couple of our requirements where they had to complete all the analysis, they had to provide a report, they had to have MDE experience, and they had to use a technique related to LiDAR. And so all three of these met those qualifications, or those requirements that staff had. And based on the comparable bid packets, staff recommends going with the lowest bid, which is Zest LLC.
And you looked at the reputation and the...
We did. We had references on all three. I apologize, I don't have my notes with you, with me, but the engineer with Zest LLC is an approved peer mediator or reviewer with MDE, so he has experience developing all those. All three, you see that CPJ had excellent references. All the references were good. Looking at the bid packets, there was no reason to not choose Zest.
Except that they have the least experience.
Right. But they work hand in hand, or he works, that engineer works hand in hand with MDE.
And the other ones don't, or?
He's an approved peer reviewer. They all have worked with MDE. He actually has been assigned things with MDE. All three of these companies are, they all have comparable bids. I would be satisfied working with any of them, and I believe staff feels the same way. They did have, Zest does have the least amount of experience.
I'm going with what my dad says. He goes, "Never go with the lowest bid." I mean, there's, there's a 30,000 difference between, if you go on the previous page, between the highest and the lowest.
Right.
And can you explain that at all as to...
Some of its locations, a couple of them were headquartered out of Washington DC, so I'm sure their overhead was, is a lot more.
Is far away like Washington.
And Laurel, right. I think one of the differences also is Zest is a two-person engineering firm as opposed to, the other ones are larger engineering firms that maybe specialize in other areas. But like I said, staff would be favorable with any of them.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Okay, ask a question.
You have a question for staff?
Yes. Okay. I'm looking at your comments here on page 19 of 84, and it says, "Based on comparable bid packets."
Mm-hmm.
Comparable or identical? I mean, are we, was everyone sent the same packet?
Nobody wrote exactly the same thing. They all...
On what you received back from them. All right.
Right, correct.
As opposed to what was sent out.
So if you look at the price includes, they all include the, the analysis, they all include the dam breach, they all include the meetings and the reports. That's...
I just want to make sure the RFP they, they received was all the same RFP.
Yes.
Okay, terrific. That's, that's what I was looking at. I'm sorry. Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Witz, have any questions?
No. Thank you.
You're welcome. Commissioner Buckman?
This report is to satisfy the states.
Correct. So what it'll do is it'll satisfy, well, I don't know that it'll satisfy, but what we'll do is we'll send the analysis into MDE on the hydraulic, the hydrologic, and the dam breach analysis. And I believe then the MDE will review all the reports and determine if there is any work that needs to be done at the dam. And then they'll review our emergency action plan to see if there's any, any changes or any updates or any modifications that we as the town have to make to that dam.
And the MDE has been satisfied with Zest's reports in the past on this kind of thing?
As far as I can tell, from their email, from their reference, and I don't have it in my packet, they were satisfied. They had no reason. All their, all the reviews, all the references were, were good. Nobody had, had a bad reference. I did note that CPJ had excellent references. Mm-hmm. I'll have my notes.
Any further questions? Mr. Blanchard?
Nope.
I don't have any either. The staff recommendation is for to take Zest LLC. I need a motion to accept a bid for the $15,912 for the dam analysis from, for Zest LLC. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the bid from the Zest LLC for the, complete the hydraulic and analysis of Rainbow Lake Dam for consideration.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Blanchard. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner O'Donnell. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Any ayes? Motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Now, we need approval of the engineering firm for the new Creamery Road pumping station.
Yes. Thank you. I, I have invited Mr. Thistle to attend this meeting to answer any questions that you may have regarding the pumping station. He was instrumental in reviewing these bids as well as other staff, Ms. Shaw, Jared Brantner, our new lead operator. So we initially put out an RFP in, in March of 2018 for a new pumping station. However, after consultation with USDA representative, she explained to us a better approach to obtaining funding for the pumping station. So we issued a new RFP in September of 2018. We had two mandatory site visits. The bids were due, sealed bids were due to the town on November 16th, and the bids were open on November 27th. They were advertised under the RFPs on our website, on Facebook, the notice on MML Classifieds, Frederick News Post publication, as well as an email sent to engineering firms that, there were five that had previously applied. Staff, staff opened the initial bid opening and staff were assigned bids to review on November 27th. As you can see, we obtained 11 bids for the engineering services for the pumping station. We had four meetings to review them. In November 27th was the initial review. December 11th, we reviewed all bids in depth, and we narrowed it down to our final three. January 10th, we reviewed, review of the final three to determine number one, staff recommendation. And then everybody took that one bid back and reviewed it more in depth. And we made a final review and the staff recommendation on January 15th of 2019. Staff recommends RK&amp;K for the new Creamery Road pumping station. As you can see on page 21, our top, we narrowed it down to three engineering firms, McCrone, RK&amp;K, and Arrow. We listed out the initial bid price and what it included. We added what it didn't include. And the, the six column over is your final estimated cost. We listed any experience the town has had with each of these engineering firms, their references, and then the USDA grant for the preliminary engineering report and engineering report that we would receive. Reasons we chose RK&amp;K, their bid was very thorough. There's a great deal of detail on the pumps, the force man capabilities, SCADA, and they had a thorough understanding of what the town needs. They have the most experience of all the bidders when it came to USDA requirements and funding. They have done over 75 MDE construction permits related to pumping stations. They've already evaluated the processes, including the requested Gorman Rupp pumps and alternatives. And RK&amp;K has a proven track record with the town as they were the construction management team that worked on the new wastewater treatment plant. And this project came in under budget with limited change orders. And of all the bids, RK&amp;K is the one that gave us a price guarantee. Price guarantee to not exceed the bid. So their bid is at 189, 189,100. And if you add their onsite services that re-requested, their bid is at 203,380.
Any questions for staff? Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes. If I recall, haven't we had to replace the pumps at the new wastewater treatment plant? Haven't we had issues with the equipment there based on the original spec that?
And that would have been GHD was your engineering firm for that.
So it was the engineering firm as opposed to?
Correct.
Okay. Would have this been something that RK&amp;K would have seen, though? You know what I'm saying? Like, were...
Not necessarily.
We're dropping a four-cylinder engine in, in a truck when it's obvious we need an eight-cylinder engine. Something along those lines.
Not necessarily. If it, if it was designed to the specifications of the engineer, they're just there to oversee the construction management, not to necessarily, and Ms. Dan, you can jump in any time that you want here. They're not necessarily there to change the design, because the design was already approved. They were very instrumental on several issues during the construction phase.
Okay. It's just, I don't know, it just strikes me that, I totally get the idea that, you know, there's, there's a set of directions they, they're there to follow. You know, this is what the, these are what the construction plans are, execute these plans. I get that. But I'm, I'm going back and forth in my mind, did we get the value for the dollar on that? Because we've had to come back and spend more money on what was specced for that facility. And yes, I get it's the engineering piece. But Mr. Mayor, did we ever hear anything from them, the construction company, saying, "Hey, we might, we might need to reconsider what's being put in here, equipment-wise?"
Yes.
Do you know?
Did we?
Yes.
All other things.
Okay. So RK&amp;K came forward advocating for?
Yes. And they were very instrumental in helping us solve the issue over the pipe, the failed pipe out there.
Right, right.
There's a, and Dan, get up here.
I'm sorry, I'm not following the... What? Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, I'm sorry, I'm not following the question.
Sure. What I'm trying to understand, I'm, with the wastewater treatment plant that RK&amp;K was involved in the construction of, it seems that the wastewater treatment plant came up short from what we were expecting because we've had to replace equipment very early in its life. And my concern is, even though RK&amp;K's the construction company, it would strike me that they would have knowledge of the functioning of the equipment and therefore finding it inadequate. Like, and I'll give my little analogy again. Like, if we have a, you know, a heavy-duty truck and we're putting in a four-cylinder engine, that small engine's not going to do the job. And wouldn't RK of K, RK&amp;K have seen that moving forward? And our town manager says, "Yes," and they did make us aware of that.
And, and you're talking about the wastewater plant?
Correct.
Itself?
Correct. Because it sounds like...
Pump station is a separate entity.
I don't know. I totally understand that. But I, I'm a little reluctant to give RK&amp;K the nod, because it seems they came up short in the, the build-out of the wastewater treatment plant, because they didn't understand or they didn't say anything, saying, "Hey, we need a bigger, you know, system here. We need a bigger, you know, treatment capacity or, you know. We, we need bigger machines." I hate to say it that way, but I'm kind of ignorant in that sense.
You can only, you can only go with what MDE will fund.
Okay.
We could have, we could have expanded the wastewater plant to 300 million gallons a day.
Sure.
If the town wanted to pay the extra dollars to do that. Okay? The state says we are 750,000 gallons a day.
No, I, I got you there on that limit, but...
That's what it was designed for.
Okay.
It's a little bit bigger than that because of all the recycle flows going on inside the plant. So probably 1.2 million internal process.
Okay.
And GHD designed it. They were stickler for no changing the designs, no, I mean, this is what we designed, this is what you'll put in. So that was the construction and the construction management were under those rules to build that. And fortunately, the town, some of the stuff does wear out a little quicker than I anticipated.
Right.
For one thing, we're continuously pushing, this year especially, one and a half times capacity of the plant or more every day.
Seems the norm, right.
Right. But it, I mean, we do meet our numbers. We...
Okay, sure, sure.
Most of the time, we do meet the numbers and our permit.
So, let me hold you there for a second, and I'll turn back to the town manager then. So the question therefore, kind of with that in mind, is, are we specking the pumping station to the need that's real versus the need that's hypothetical? Like, like the over?
Well, you can only, and, and Dan can answer it too. One, the, that's what, part of what that preliminary engineering report and environmental reporter for, because that'll go to USDA and basically MDE for review. And this pumping station will be designed off of those recommendations of what, what the capacity is and what needs to be. But you can still only send, so you can only design your pumping station so big, because it's still going to have to give the flows to the wastewater treatment plant. But back to your stuff about the, you know, RK&amp;K, I think Dan and I have had conversations. I was here through most of the construction period, and I found RK&amp;K very helpful. They addressed all our concerns. They came in for meetings, phone calls, particularly during the pipe issue.
Okay.
I can't say enough about them. Yeah. Have there been problems with the wastewater treatment plant? Absolutely. I attribute to them, to the actual design engineer. They were very difficult to work with. They were not fixing, changing anything. And, and you know, Dan can add to that, but...
Okay. Now, that adds clarity to it.
Well, the question that we asked is why during this, and we, and I wasn't involved, why wasn't the pumping station recommended at the time the wastewater treatment plant was designed?
Correct.
It was actually the mayor's question.
Right.
Why wasn't the pumping station included in that? We might have been able to alleviate some of those problems. One reason or another, and I guess the preliminary report, it wasn't deemed necessary. I, I don't know. I can only speculate. I reached out to USDA and they couldn't give me a definitive answer.
Okay. No, that adds clarity. And I'm sorry if I sound like I'm second guessing you guys. I don't mean to sound that way, but I really want to understand our, our process. Well, of course, right.
I would expect that.
Sure, sure. Okay, okay.
May I ask a question?
Thank you.
Commissioner Witz?
Ms. Willis alluded to that, the pipe issue. I remember it was one side fingers pointing, you know, it's their fault, their fault and all that fiasco. Without mentioning names, though, well, I can't mention them, RK&amp;K. Were they part, they weren't part of that, were they?
No, they were the construction management. They, they were, they were instrumental in helping me work through it.
Okay.
However, to have them proceed any further, we needed to pay them as an outside consultant for the issue. Fortunately, we were able to resolve it with the town attorneys, but the issue was essentially never really resolved. They still are pointing fingers at each other.
And so tonight, we're, we're looking at approving the engineering firm for the design of the new pumping station?
Yes.
This is not the construction. This is simply the design that hopefully will be followed when it is constructed?
Yes.
Okay.
So they will actually be designing this one?
Correct. RK&amp;K will be designing it. And one thing about RK&amp;K, they have just extensive experience when it comes to pumping stations. It's one of the things that they really specialize in. They had hands down the most experience with pumping stations as well as MDE and USDA. So initially, if you approve RK&amp;K tonight, we can move forward with applying for the grant for the 30,000 for the engineer, or the preliminary engineering report and the environmental report. And once that's accepted by USDA and I believe, yeah, USDA, and then we can proceed with the design phase of it. And then once it's designed, then you'll put it out to bid for construction. It's not a, it's not a quick process.
Okay. I'll make a, I'll make a motion to accept the RK&amp;K bid for the pumping station design.
I'll make, I'll second that.
Motion's been made by Commissioner O'Donnell, second by Commissioner Buckman. Is any more on the discussion on the matter before we vote on it?
No.
Mr. Blanchard?
Nope. Good.
When they designed this, is there any way they can, it gets flooded all the time, is that correct? Most of the time, especially with the wild water, completely comes out. You can't even go down inside the building.
Correct.
I was wondering, the new plant that we, I just got, we just got done tearing an old one out, and they just put a new one on in Laurel. It looks like a house now. You couldn't even tell what the hell, for the new pump station. Theirs was in the lower spot, too, that got flooded all the time beside stream and the wild water. I don't know if the, the new pump station can be designed where it can be built up a little higher or...
It's definitely going to be a lot more maintenance-friendly and flood-friendly.
Yes.
It's going, hopefully, the design is going to move it a little bit farther out of the flood plain.
Right.
Pumps themselves are going to be, we anticipate being just a little bit lower than the ground level right now. We're not going to have that three stories below the pumps.
Right.
That's where it all flows. It takes out all the auxiliaries every time it floods.
Right. I've seen the pictures.
The motors certainly are above water, but everything else that runs underwater. The, the actual wastewater pump motors, but everything else is underwater.
Right.
And it's not fun to worry the next day.
No, it's not. It's going to clean everything down. Sterilize it. I understand. I've seen it, and I've had to go into them, too. I understand.
Keep the pumps pumping.
I, I agree with the, I mean, for the K&amp;K, too, also, RK&amp;K getting the, the bid for the design portion of the...
I was really impressed with their bid. They covered a lot.
Yes.
And, and you were, you told them what we need exactly, and they're going to, you know, okay.
Yes, yes. They, they know what we need.
Because you, no, because you've been here the whole time and know where it's flooding and all that. They need to know that, because that way it doesn't happen anymore.
Correct. That's why we went with the Gorman Rupp pumps. We want to get away from those long...
Yeah. I understand.
...shafts. They're great pumps when they work, but the shafts are a very weak link.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Aye?
Aye.
Any ayes? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Okay. The next on agenda is approval of the pool management company?
Yes.
For 2019, 2000, is that '21 or '20? It says '21 on it.
'21. Three years.
Oh, it's a three-year contract?
Possibly.
Okay.
All right. So the timeline, again, for the pool management for the 2019, 2021 pool season, again, it's three years. If you don't have to approve three years, you can approve one, two, or three. The RFP was published by the town on November 16th. The deadline for the bids was January 9th, and the bids were opened by staff on January 11th. On January 22nd, we reviewed the bids in depth and staff recommendations were made. Public notice under the RFP on the town's website, news publication, notice on the MML Classifieds, and the RFP was emailed and mailed to five pool management companies. Actually, Ms. Nail did quite lengthy investigation on both companies and had a lot of information if you have any questions regarding the bids. We received two bids. RSV Pools, who was our pool management company last year, and a company called USA Management. USA Management is, their corporate headquarters is in Roswell, Georgia. They do have one office in Rockville. And then RSV Pools, which is located in Gaithersburg, Maryland. In the chart on page 23, you'll see the 2019 costs. RSV Pool, their cost is $58,596 for the pool season. USA Management, they break everything out. So they've got fees added for, you have a base rate of $45,780. They do a separate invoice for your chemicals, which is estimated at 43, or $4,352. Their cleaning is estimated at $4,200. The, the invoice to just open the pool is $1,314. And estimated cost for them to obtain all the permits is $375,000, or $375, excuse me. Their bid is totaled at $56,000, $56,021.40. The, then you break out to year 2020. You'll see RSV Pools jumps to $63,654. This is an increase due to the chemical costs. 18% increase in chemical costs, an increase in minimum wage, because that's estimated to go from $10, $10 to $15 an hour. And there's an extra week in 2020. There are 99 days that the pools open in 2019 and 106 days in 2020, from Memorial Day to Labor Day. USA Management, well, all we could do was estimate. Their's $56,021.40. However, I'm sure there'll be an increase in chemicals as well as an increase, because minimum wage is, as I said, anticipated to go up. The 2021, for the third year, RSV Pools is at $61,620. Again, we can't really estimate what USA Management's is going to be. We only know at least it's going to be $56,021.40. Staff recommends continuing service with RSV Pools. The proposal's complete with no hidden or additional costs. They appear to be more in tune with what the service, what services the town needs. And town staff is very familiar with their staff and their work.
Any questions for staff? Commissioner O'Donnell?
Just to make sure, guards in uniform, was that part of our contract again?
Yes. A question was asked. Employees to wear uniforms as requested. And RSV spells it out in their contract that they will, will wear t-shirts with the company logo. It's not mentioned in USA Management's contract. However, their literature shows guards in uniforms. So it's not mentioned in their proposal.
Any discussion of lessons?
Swimming lessons. Let me look at my chart here. Do they provide swimming lessons pending on interest? Yes to both.
Okay. And last one, hopefully, local hiring?
Hiring from the area, yes, yes.
Terrific. Okay, thank you.
Just a quick question on that. See, the hiring, I've had a couple teenagers ask me, when do they start that? What do they start looking at, interviews and things of that nature?
I don't know. I would imagine shortly after they're awarded the contract, they'll start looking to hire. We're already in February, and they should be starting at the pool in May. So I would imagine pretty soon.
Is there a phone number or an address? Is, if young people are interested in applying for it?
I think when, last year, we referred them to RSV Pools.
Okay.
And we would do the same this year to whichever one was chosen.
Okay, okay. Thanks.
Commissioner Buckman?
No, go ahead. If you have a question, go ahead.
There seemed to be a lack of supervision of the lifeguards this last summer. And I was feeling quite a few complaints, but I don't know if you received them, of the lifeguards really not attending to the pool very well, and other, other such issues. Are we able to guarantee, because I didn't mind, but it seemed like that the pool manager was absent for quite some of that summer. We can't have that happen again.
Right.
Is there some way that we can apply more supervision as to what's going on there? Because it was a little out of hand this last summer.
As far as staff's concerned, or?
Well, I don't know. Like, the pool management, the pool needs to be managed.
Right.
There was lifeguards sitting at tables and not really attending to the children, which is the most important thing, and other kinds of things like this.
Right.
Which I know it's probably a regular problem for a lot of people.
Well, yeah, I think both companies are going to hire from the same pool of people, so you may have the same lifeguards or, or whatnot. Our concern is, yeah, yes to your question. Yes, I think we can make it instrumental to Nash. He's, he's, or if it goes with RSV Pools, he's the one, our point of contact, that it needs to be more supervision. He needs to be more hands-on. The concern with the other one, is they're further away? How much response are we going to get? Both of them are not local, Gaithersburg, Rockville. So I don't know what kind of problems you're going to, we can try. We can try.
Anyone further questions, Ms. Buckman?
I have a question, so the RFP went out as a three-year, potential three-year contract? Or was it like a base year and two option years?
No, it went out as a three-year contract.
Okay, so to, so we're being asked tonight then to approve a three-year contract?
You don't have to.
And if we don't, does the proposal have to go back out for one year then?
No.
We, we used to have them for three years at the time.
Right, the idea for doing it for three years is, is the pool management companies for pu- for the public sector are slim. You don't get many companies, we only get, I think we only got two last year too. Trying to lock a company in for three years to make sure that you have a management company, um, because the concern is they are starting to go away, they're only doing the private sector, is try to lock them in and lock their rates in, was the idea between three years.
I mean, they seem like a, a pretty good company, uh, compared to the other fiasco we had a few years back. My, I'm just, I don't know, a little apprehensive in approving a three-year.
A lot of our contracts in, for the town after their initial one year have gone to three years to, to kinda lock them in. You tend to get better rates, I, I mean, I don't know if the rates are gonna be, are, are good for three years, if that's gonna be a good market price.
And Ms., Ms. Nail's happy with this, uh, company? Okay, not to put you on the spot there, but... Okay. Um, how many more questions?
Um, I have some. Do we have, we, we send out grant money for, do we have on the bathrooms?
We are still waiting to hear, uh, grant money that were awarded.
Uh, for the changing...
We haven't gotten the award letter for the bathhouse yet, so we're unable to start the rehab probably until after this pool season.
Okay, that's, we're quite okay, cause when, uh, if RSV, uh, whatever pool company gets the contract that we have, it'd be nice, like she said, to keep it, the... There should be only one, one should be resting, you know, out in the shade while the other ones are on duty, but they could be cleaning. Look, check, picking up trash, and then there's stuff that, that the, the, uh, lifeguards can do to maintain the pool as it is, cause it is brand new, so it shouldn't be much cleaning and stuff to have to keep, but to keep up on it, it won't get so backed up. And, and the bathrooms and stuff, they should be checked purely op-, you know, periodically through the at least every half an hour, I mean, they have enough of them on duty at one time. But instead of having two or three, like she said, sitting on the bench, so the pool managers need to know, you know, keep them, should be keeping them busy so they don't get bored. There's stuff for them to do. Okay, I have no further questions, thank you. I need a motion to accept one of the bids for the pool contract. For physical year two thousand nineteen. Any motions?
I make a motion to accept the bid.
Excuse me.
Sorry, from the RSVP Pools Company, as recommended by the town staff.
For three years?
Uh, for three years, sorry, yes.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Blanchard, is there a second for the motion?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Commissioner O'Donnell. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any nays?
Nay.
Nay.
Uh, motion, motion carries three to two. Okay. Agenda item number five. Physical year two thousand eighteen budget transfers for the capital fund projects. Kathy?
Yes, I'm getting my notes out.
Okay, so if you recall from Michelle's audit report, um, there's an excess. Um, upon the completion of the FY eighteen audit, the town of Emmonsburg had additional revenues over expenses in the general fund in the amount of a hundred and fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. These additional funds are now available for allocation within the capital fund, or capital projects fund. It is recommended by s- town staff that a hundred and fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight thou- or seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars be transferred to the following capital fund categories, if so approved by the Board of Commissioners. So, I'm gonna kinda work from the, off my notes and we'll go through them. One thousand, four hundred and sixty-seven dollars, it's gonna be bullet number, or bulleted fif- fifteen buildings, one oh two, three hundred A South Seton. That's simply a, to balance out an item, it is currently, uh, a negative and that money will balance it out to zero. Same thing with the one above it, uh, thirty, uh, six twelve signs, balance out the line item, uh, a transfer of two thousand, six hundred and thirty-four dollars. Then I'm gonna move up to, uh, the top, uh, twelve, planning, four hun- line item four hundred is stormwater management. We're requesting, it's a total of fifty-six thousand, four sixty-two, and it breaks out to, uh, twenty-seven thousand dollars uh, for two thousand nineteen required stormwater projects that are mandated product, projects by the state. It'll be the baseline impervious assessment, the standard operating procedures development, and yearly stormwater inspections. The next amount is six thousand, thirty-five dollars, that will be for the provincial parkway storm drain excavation. Unfortunately, a storm drain was filled in at, behind the residence, which has, uh, caused the entire stormwater, uh, to back up and it's gonna be dug out and repiped. I believe we showed pictures at one meeting.
What was it filled in with?
Dirt, rock.
Oh, I remember now, yeah.
You know, it wasn't purposely filled in, it was sediment, is that correct?
It was purposely filled in by homeowner. So, we have, we have to clear it out, it's to totally, but we found out about it because the initial complaint was for ponding of water, um, in that area. Once staff went out and Zach went out and public work staff went out, we determined that the storm drain itself had been filled in.
And that ownership isn't being held responsible, cause...
No, she no longer lives there. So it's a project that the town has to undertake, part two, to maintain our stormwater management, we're gonna get fined if we don't fix it.
No, it has to be fined.
So, no, I, trust me, I, I agree.
Is the whole line completely filled?
Yes.
Do you know how many feet it is?
I don't have the, I, I put out a bid, I don't have it in front of me, I think it's between twenty-five to fifty feet.
My goodness, where did she go with the dirt?
Just over the years, the sediment just goes into the, the pipe.
That's what I'm, okay. There are companies who can, uh, they will go blast it and, and suck it out at the same time, you don't have to dig it up and replace it?
Yes.
Is that who, what you're gonna use?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And then the remaining, uh, of that fifty-six thousand will be twenty-three thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven, that's gonna be set aside to large stormwater restoration projects that need to be completed by, per the state by two thousand twenty-three. The, where am I at? Next item down will be for the parks, park equipment, um, upgrades. Give me one second, my lines are messed up here. Alright, let me actually jump down to ten legislative nine 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 general, that's eighty-three hundred, or eight thousand, three hundred dollars. This is, uh, it's called ShoreScan, and I went to the MML Fall Conference. There is a company that, um, you can scan all your documents, your old minutes, your old agendas, all your invoices. It's a cloud-based system that makes it then searchable by staff. Staff has a very hard time going back and researching anything, cause most of what we have is in the file room, in boxes, not labeled very well. Or their PDFs or Word documents on our hard drive and it's difficult to find. This system is completely, um, searchable. So, I met with the, the company, Mayor Canard happened to be standing there and just raved about it. So, we had, um, the representative of the company come in and give a presentation to, uh, Ms. Shaw, Ms. Ray. And then they went down and watched Thurmont use the system and came back and raved about it, how great this system's gonna be and it will help streamline what we do in here and make everything a lot easier to research. And in the long run, when you start invoice, or scanning your invoices in, it's gonna make your audit process even easier, because you'll be able to find documents quicker.
Can I ask a question? Will you be scanning all the old documents into the system too, if we do get this? So who does that, the company?
Staff.
So we no longer need storage for all these documents, or we have to keep...
It's gonna go hand in hand with our retention policy, um, that hopefully will someday be, get approved by the state, we can bring it back to the board. It will help free up a lot of space, there's a lot of documents that we can get rid of. Obviously, the old documents, the minutes, the agendas, we wanna keep them, not necessarily the agendas, but the minutes, you wanna keep them for historical value. Anything that's back there that's, has historical value, we're not gonna get rid of. It's either gonna stay here or it's gonna get sent to the archives, but yes, it's gonna free up a lot of space. I have people itching to get rid of stuffs.
So, so we will be sending some of the hard copies to ar- ar- archived?
Yeah, once, once the retention policy is approved and once we know exactly what the state wants us to do, some of the stuff will be sent to the archives.
I guess my main concern with the cloud-based storage is, is there some sort of redundant backup?
Redundant backup.
Meaning if anything's uploaded to the cloud, uh, if, if it gets lost and then it's gone?
You can answer, yes.
There's a CD that they send us every month.
Okay, thanks.
Um, what's that one?
The CD would give it a lot.
Go to, um, what's this one?
He's never heard.
Number, the second line item would be sixty parks, three fifty-two park and rec equipment upgrades. You have, um, twenty-eight thousand, of that thirty-three thousand, twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and forty-five dollars is, actually, yes. Is our, a part of our twenty-five percent match on the all-accessible playground. Usually when you submit for POS grants, you only have to have a ten percent match. Unfortunately, they changed it this year and you need a twenty-five percent match, so we had to add some additional monies to that. And then the other portion of that was five thousand dollars for twenty-five percent match on disc golf for community park. To get, to encourage people to come out and walk our parks and get some exercise. I don't know how many people are familiar with disc golf, it's a low-cost kinda recreational thing that all ages can participate, you throw a frisbee into a basket, you set up a course.
I've seen it down in the Howard County.
Yeah, there's, Woodsboro Park has them, Thurmont, I don't know, does Thurmont have one yet? Walkersville and Woodsboro.
Has there been a request for a disc golf course?
We've heard comment, there's been stuff on Facebook, um, of people that go to other, um, places in the county to participate in it. It's kind of a new and upcoming recreational event for people.
Not new.
Not new.
Not new, but...
When I was a teenager.
I just know the mountain had a very elaborate course at one point in time and it kinda fell...
It's, it's, I think as far as the cost wise, um... It's not a huge investment and if it's gonna get people coming here, you know, the, the people, I don't play. But they traveled to different, you know, I see it on Facebook, the groups, they, they travel, okay, we're all gonna meet in Walkersville, we'll play and then we're gonna go here and get a burger or a beer and, or we're gonna go here and play. So, part of it's hoping, you know, that it's also gonna encourage people to visit our, our, our town, visit our restaurants and stay a little while.
How many holes are we looking at?
Maddie?
Five thousand dollars or forty-five hundred dollars? Eighteen?
We, we put in for a grant for it.
And it will be cited in community park, like, behind us?
And, and the grant is just for
Twenty-five...
frisbee golf, or is that a grant for parks?
That, that actual pro, that money would be set aside for disc golf, or, yeah.
Did the, the five thousand dollars or whatever she's requesting is the match?
Is our match.
No, I understand that, but I'm... I'm not convinced in its popularity, I know it's popular and I know people like it, but... And, and I'm the, the, I'm very enthusiastic about parks and rec, don't get me wrong, but this is one that I think it's, it's, day has come and gone, I'm a little worried about that.
I kinda disagree, I mean, I see it, I see it on, on all the different avenues and when you think about our parks, not everybody swims, not everybody plays basketball, not everybody plays tennis, this is something that, no matter, not no matter, but generally, most people can participate in. And they get out and they get walking and they have something, I think, I mean, it's just my opinion, the investment is small to hopefully get people out and get them exercising and get them in our parks.
Surely, there's not just eighteen in one area.
Well, no, they're spread out throughout the whole park.
Yeah, along the walking path ways.
So, we have any conflicts with shanked balls, so to speak, uh, veering off the line, you know, as we drive, or...
No, I would, no, the engineer, the design is gonna make sure that that's not an issue. And if we have to scale it back, if it's not, if, if for some reason you can't design, you can't fit eighteen in there, obviously, we can shrink it to whatever is feasible for the park.
It, it uses, uh, a lot of the open space, it's, you know, cause it's only a little pool or a little basket that goes up with a number on it.
No, I've seen it, I've, I've actually played it, but, uh, not since nineteen seventy-nine. And, don't get me wrong, it was a wonderful year, but, uh...
What is it, the Frederick Social Sports, they have a whole, a whole league you can sign up for.
Uh, I've, I've seen it this past summer, in the Howard County, they're big into it, I see it in the parks down there all the time. But the, um, we, we actually don't... A lot of our park is empty now, because we no longer have a little league. You know, you got all these fields that are empty and just sitting there and...
Well, would this, would this be placed on the field behind the building, I mean, like, in the open field?
It'll be around the open space areas, the grass, probably. And usually, the walking path, it tries to follow and then you will go off the walking path and go to the, to the number that's, just like an exercise station.
No, I understand, I, I'm just trying to...
Well, whatever happened to us getting a, a new music pavilion, I would think that's more important than...
That, we did submit the grant for that, that's part of the community, sorry, the community parks and playground grant. And we should be receiving a war, a notice of funding in spring.
Nice.
That's awesome.
Yeah, we do need that, badly, it's in bad shape.
That grant's for about fifty thousand. And community parks and playgrounds is a hundred percent, there's no match. Am I moving on?
Yep.
Okay. Where am I at here? Under sixty parks, Rainbow Lake, I set aside eighteen thousand for the engineering study for Rainbow Lake. Um, not sure how much we were gonna need, which bid was chosen. I'd like to keep it at the eighteen thousand in case there's anything that's unforeseen. I can't imagine, and if, if it's not spent, then we can make a, a budget transfer later in the fiscal year.
So are we now considering Rainbow Lake and the reservoir area as park?
What we did, uh, in talking to Michelle, the Rainbow Lake is really not designated anywhere. It wasn't just, it wasn't, um, designated in your water fund, it's not really designated anywhere and that was the next logical place to put it. If you didn't put it in your general fund, you couldn't make a budget transfer to pay for it either. What's next?
Well...
So are we designating Rainbow Lake then as a park, is that, is that official or...
We're not designating, no, we're not designating it as a park, it's just gonna come under line item, or the fund, or the Department sixty. Department sixty is labeled, it's Parks Recreation. Doesn't, it's not necessarily, it's not designated as a park. Um, I think it's actually Park Recreation and Culture is what Department sixty is.
So all the bike trails are labeled under Recreation?
It seemed, it was a logical place for it. If I move down to sixty, one ninety-one, one ninety-one pool... If I move down to 60, 191, 191 pool, 7,200, that's to go towards the 25% match on the renovation of the bathhouse. The last item is 30, Streets 184 Parking Enforcement, that's to purchase five parking meter houses and two meter adapters, our parking meters are aging. And then the last, or...
What are parking meter houses?
The tops of them, the pole goes up in the top that has all the meter stuff and the coins.
The housing?
That's what they call it. Last item for 23,500, was requested by our Public Works Department, 11,000 of that is for what they call two salt dogs and slide-in salt spreaders to help with snow removal. And then the last item is 12,500, is for a new utility vehicle, all-terrain vehicle, all-purpose for the use in the streets and the parks, part of the reason being is our old, what it would be slated for would be in the winter to help clean and salt the sidewalks, and in the spring, to go into the parks, go into the trails, help with, like, daily park checks, you're not dragging your truck all the way back through, mulching around the trees, they can haul their equipment in and out, help with monthly street sweeping. The reason that we're looking at doing the salt dogs and the UTV, last year we contracted with a company to do sidewalk snow removal, that company has focused more on just hauling of snow, we put a bid out, the new company, to do sidewalk removal, we're paying triple the cost for just snow removal on our sidewalks and salt bags, so we're looking at next year, next winter, of doing it, of staff just doing the sidewalk removal, so this will help with that process.
What sidewalks are we talking about?
We do all the sidewalks here, I don't have the list in front of me, we do the sidewalks here, at the community center, we do it along up at the pool, we do the East Lincoln Walkway.
If it's not associated with the residence?
Correct, and I'm drawing a blank on the other ones.
The fitness trail in the park, does that get clouded? Okay, so is this a gator that we're talking about, or something?
It's similar to, let's see if I have a picture, if I threw the picture in my box here, yes, it's kind of like, it's called a mid-size crossover, so it's like two passenger, I don't know if you want to see it?
Sure, sure.
It's two passenger, if you want to pass it down.
Sure, sure.
Passenger with, like, a bed in the back to haul their supplies.
And there's a plow that attaches to the front?
Yeah, there's a plow that can attach to it, they can attach one of these new salt spreaders to it.
We need nets to protect the guys from the frisbees.
And it's not too heavy for our sidewalks?
No.
Once you can't park a car in a sidewalk?
Right, right, correct. And it'll get into places that our trucks are tearing up.
It would work nice in our little small alleys too, that are tight.
Right, some of the alleys that have been closed down and made into sidewalks, yes. And so those are the budget transfers that staff is requesting.
Any other further questions for staff on the transfer items? Any commissioners? Okay, I need a motion to accept the transfer capital projects fund for 152,758,000.
I guess I'll make a motion for the 2018 budget transfer to the capital fund, do I have to say the amount?
Please.
$152,758,000.
A second.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Buckman, second one by Commissioner Ritz, these proceeds will be, are going to be spread out through the items submitted here?
Yes.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Any further discussion?
Oh, any further discussion? I asked that one, she didn't answer, go ahead.
Yes, I'm, honestly, everything seems sound to me, I'm just...
It's the frisbee.
Yeah, I used to be on Wemo's mailing list, I mean, I used to play a lot of disc, admittedly, but... That's the one thing that concerns me, spending on that, and again, I'm all for the parks being used vigorously and actively, and I'm just, I'm a little leery of that.
I'm feeling the same.
If we were to scale it back to a nine-hole course, I just think, given the scale of the park and the user conflict that might arise, I...
I think what they're gonna say is that no one's gonna come travel to...
Yeah, yeah, I would just, I would just like to see a schematic of the course, I can't even believe I'm spending this much time talking about it, I'm sorry.
It fixated on this.
I want a custom frisbee.
We could even sell town frisbees. Sell town frisbees. Like the town ornament.
No, no, even if we approve the budget transfer this evening, I mean, preliminarily, we have preliminary plans for this course, but when is it...
Comes up.
We're gonna have to...
When do you foresee it, this spring, construction?
Probably, yes, yes. Once we receive the final, final award from the state.
Assuming we get that award, will the town be organizing a league or anything like that?
We probably can, it'll have to be like somebody volunteering to do it.
Wayne?
Not organizing that. Okay, thank you. Mr. President, thank you.
Any further discussion?
I'm tired.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Aye, any nays?
Aye.
Any nays? I know what you're getting for Christmas.
A mountain bike. Thank you, Mr. Swinney.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Let me see now here. Next on the agenda is presentation of amended sign ordinance due to the recent legislative changes.
So, I'll just kick it off, and I'm gonna let Zach take over for it, as most of you know, you've been to some of the conferences, that there's been a lot of legislative changes in Supreme Court cases surrounding sign ordinances, and what you can and you cannot have in your sign ordinance, and what you can say, somebody can have and not have, the sign ordinance is so long and large, that Zach and I discussed it along with the mayor, that we felt it was best to break it up into three sessions, and as you can see at the February, at tonight's meeting, we're gonna do Section 1738.010 through 050, and then we'll break it out again for the March session, and then the April session, so for the next two meetings, it's gonna be discussion item only, there'll be nothing for consideration.